Past the stated hour.
That's good.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of emergency community services committee to order. Members of the public are advised that our meeting is a webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily hard-hydrated on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may be obligated to officially record this meeting as well. Madam Clerk, are you ready to change your agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is one change to the agenda. Item 9.1 is a revised motion respecting the gateway arena purchase.
May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Deputy Mayor Jackson. All those in favor?
Carry.
Carry. Declaration of interest, if I can pass the chair. Counselor Johnson?
Absolutely. Please go ahead, Counselor.
Any items pertaining to St. Matthews House IV or any services related to IDIADA, autism therapy, special needs, I am accusing that stuff of. Thank you. At the appropriate time, I will pass the chair back over to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson, take the chair back. May I please have a motion to approve the amendments of the September 12, 2016 emergency community services meeting as presented, moved by Far, seconded by Whitehead. All those in favor? Counselor Jackson, have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, just on page nine to thirteen, just mentioned it to Lisa, our excellent legislative assistant, that I believe she mentioned, say, returning to September 26 being today instead of the 24th, which was on the weekend, just out of the minutes act.
Yes, Counselor Jackson, we put that in there as a quality control check and we passed. Congratulations. We've heard the minutes as amended. May I please have a... All those in favor?
Carry.
Carry. Excellent. Item 5.1 is a report respecting the appointment of the Administrator Ontario Works. May I please have a motion to approve the recommendations of the report? Moved by Far, seconded by Johnson. All those in favor?
Carry.
Carry. Excellent. At this point, on the item 8.1, I'm going to relinquish the chair to Counselor Johnson.
Great. Please go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry. This is on the information report, which is regarding the childcare system's special needs resourcing. I'll just pass this to you.
Very good. So we are on item 8.1. Thank you. And I see there's no staff presentation. Are there questions or discussions in respect to the setting? Any comments?
I think stat should lead us through.
To you, Mr. Acting Chair. Grace Mader, the Director of Co-op Council, through all the questions asked and the responses. Right then, do a formal presentation.
To you, Mr. Chair. At the September 12 meeting, there was a number of questions that came back to staff as follow-up and reports submitted. So I'll just go through the high-level overview of each one of them. First question was about, was there an error in the procurement process? The RFP that was sent out, it closed at the end of May. There was some confusion that surrounded the awarding of the contract to Community Living Hamilton. It was publicly released on bid draw on July 26, and due to an administrative error, St. Matthews House was not notified of the results until August 6. That meant that it was outside of the five-day window for any dispute resolution, that they had enough opportunity. At that time, due to the error, the procurement section agreed to meet with St. Matthews House, and their defined business days was allotted to them at that point in time. Tina, I hope from procurement is here, if there's any further questions on that one, I am, that should be more than willing to address as well. St. Matthews was given the opportunity to outline what their concerns were at that time, that each of those items were discussed with the manager of procurement. They were also then given the opportunity for further follow-up if they requested. On August 16, they notified procurement that they will not do, go any further with their concerns and dispute and the appeal. Second question was, does the city have a binding contract with Community Living Hamilton? As we indicated, the contract was awarded on August 2, and we were in the process of working through the transition services with Community Living and St. Matthews House and the Hamilton District Co-op Council. City has an existing binding agreement with Community Living Hamilton. The contract for the new special needs model has a term of five years, and once it will be executed, once all the terms have been worked out. We see this as merely a formality, that we have entered into that binding agreement with them. The next question was about, is the city liable for severance cost of St. Matthews House employees? The city is not liable for severance cost. The city is not the employer for any of St. Matthews House or its employees. Another question was, will the loss of funding for special needs resourcing jeopardize the existence of St. Matthews House? City, we have not indicated, we have not formally reviewed any of the impacts that this may have on their overall stability. We also know that the city also funds a number of different areas, including childcare. They operate a childcare program, which we fund on an annual basis. They have Singles Residence Program, Homelessness Partnership Initiative, the Community Partnership Program, and Mental Health Outreach. In 2016, St. Matthews received approximately 2.1 for the delivery of the special needs resources. Of 163,000 of that went towards administrative functions. The removal of this administration funding does present a potential risk for St. Matthews. We have met with both St. Matthews and the management, and I attended their annual general meeting last week, and also spoke about the recognizing the impact this loss of funding could have on them as an organization. The city has made a commitment, as I've indicated in the past, that we've worked with them to determine how best we can help mitigate what this potential loss would do, what are some other opportunities that the city may have with them for providing services under the contracts, that in particular, the area that I'm responsible for, which is the childcare The next question was, can the city require Community Living Hamilton to offer jobs to St. Matthews House employees at equivalent hours, wages, and benefits? The city, as city staff, have been working with Community Living Hamilton. They have been incredibly open with their process on how they're approaching the hiring for these positions. We indicated at the time that there were approximately 40 positions impacted at St. Matthews House. Community Living Hamilton has gone through their process for hiring, and they're looking at up to 50 positions. They have been working through, as part of the procurement requirement or the RFP requirement that they offer the opportunity to St. Matthews House staff. They have followed through with that opportunity, that any St. Matthews House staff that are interested, they were provided with the opportunity to interview for a position. They're working through those offers as we speak. We don't know the update of it, and that is strictly up to Community Living Hamilton as to who they're hiring. They have offered to waive the enrollment period for extended group benefits, excuse me, for extended group benefits for eligible employees. Community Living has also waived the employment period for participation in their defined contribution pension plan. They have committed to placing new employees at comparable placement for vacation schedules on their scale. So for example, the staff currently earns vacation based on five years of time at St. Matthews. Community Living will be placed at the same five-year level. Community Living has not finalized the total number of full-time and part-time positions, and I know this has been a concern to St. Matthews House and to the union. They're continuing to work through that. They've been asking candidates when they're being, coming in for interviews as to what their preferences, what they're currently employed at, and then will be making decisions based on, as they move forward, based on that information. Community Living has been job posting in cases candidates must have access to a personal vehicle. That was also an area that was noted as a concern. Well, they've indicated that they want to know if someone has access to it, where they're going to be then placing people. They'll do their best to be able to place them so they're able to accommodate through public transit. It's not a requirement that would preclude them from offering them a position. Community Living has also confirmed that full-time staff are entitled to benefits. Full-time staff working 40 hours per week. The city had also identified this as particular area of concern for St. Matthews House staff that are currently working under 30 hours but not being eligible for benefits, and that we had addressed, we're continuing to address those concerns with Community Living Hamilton. Another area of concern that was noted was about the hourly rate. Community Living pays an hourly rate that is lower for its part-time staff, but both the full-time and the part-time hourly rate is higher than the current hourly rate at St. Matthews. Next question was, can children with special needs and their families expect to receive the same quality of service in the new special needs resourcing model? The goal of this whole endeavor was to enhance the services and access points for children and families. We'll continue to work with our community partners, both Community Living Hamilton and St. Matthews and Co-op Council during this transition period and into the new year, but when the contract then moves over to Community Living. We've been working with our community partners, all the childcare operators, to ensure that families are built wherever possible to mitigate any impact that we have on them. There's always going to be some transition of staff every year through normal hiring and changes. We're also ensuring that the type of model of service that we're looking at moving towards is also more in line with best practice than a number of communities going towards. We're working to support childcare operators and staff with that new model as well. Question was asked about changes to the special needs resourcing model being communicated to families. We provide regular updates to both parents and our community partners, the childcare operators, with any changes that have been going on with this process. Just as late as Friday, another communication went out to all of the childcare operators. To date, we provide four communication emails out to the whole early years community. These included both through our early years community, the update newsletters on three occasions, and an email. We recognize that further communication to families is needed, and we will be providing that once we get past this process, and so all of the confirmed information can then be communicated directly with any parents. If there are any other questions that we haven't addressed that may be of confidential nature, we'd be more than willing to do that on an in-camera, or if any other questions that we can answer today that we haven't already addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I take it that if any questions are asked that you feel legally need to be answered in camera, and we will indicate that's the case, and then the committee will decide whether or not you're going to go to camera.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have Eleanor, a proponent from legal, is also here to address any of those.
Great. So first on my speaker's list is Counselor Jackson. Please go ahead, Counselor.
Thanks, Mr. Acting Chairman. So Grace, who's with you again? Eleanor's here from legal. Thank you. And wasn't Tina?
Tina.
That's here from procurement. Thank you. Grace, first of all, thank you very, very much. I know you've endured a series of a barrage of questions from a number of us. I'll start with myself. Over the last two or three weeks, since this pretty well came to a head, so I thank you for your composure, and I thank you for bringing this thorough response back on that meet with acceptability or favorability from certain parties that may have wanted a different outcome. But first of all, thank you very much for following through on a lot of the questions that we were being asked of, that we just didn't have the answers for. So Grace, if you could just bear with me now, and just for any clarification, Mr. Acting Chairman, I... On page two, Grace, of your report, due to an administrative error, so we've acknowledged that. So because of the administrative error, extra days, Mr. Acting Chairman, were given, through to Grace, is that, in other words, the extra days given would have been if the administrative error had not occurred, that that would have allowed the appeal time, discussion time to, Mr. Acting Chairman, through you, Grace, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Can I ask from procurement standpoint, Tina, none of us are perfect, least of all me, how do we ensure going forward that administrative-type error can be corrected in the future? Mr. Acting Chairman, through you, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's been a learning experience for our binders, our co-op representatives, and I, we've shared the problem and what had happened with everyone in the office, and they're fully aware of what had happened. And actually, we, it was just an isolated incident that happened, and we haven't seen that problem occur in the past or going forward.
Thank you for that reason, my comfort level there, that you, you're dealing with it, or I've dealt with it. So, Mr. Acting Chairman, further down, August 12, St. Matthews House met with the Manager of Procurement. August 12, if I recall, was the actual city council day, where we would have ratified the decision of ECS. So help me understand, from that council day, which it would have been ratified, which to me, if any last-minute appeal should have happened, it should have been before the 12. Mr. Acting Chairman, through you, Grace, help me just further, or Tina, help me reconcile that, unless I'm missing something. Grace, if you follow my line of logic, to me, that opportunity to escalate to one last appeal would have been germane before the council meeting on the Friday, where the recommendation from committee of staff were to be ratified, unless I'm missing something, Mr. Acting Chairman, through you?
Dear Mr. Chairman, the, yes, the meeting with the committee to give the information report came to committee, and we had scheduled the vendor dispute resolution meeting, I believe, two days after that committee meeting. I explained to St. Matthews Group that if there was anything to warrant a reconsideration of their proposal, we could certainly take that to our legal representatives and deal with that in due course. But I felt that it wasn't necessary to pull the report at that time to hear out the vendor dispute resolution, and if there was anything that would have changed the outcome, then we would have done it.
Okay, thanks, Tina. And again, this is, the predication here is all because St. Matthews, upon first procurement, and your review based on the feedback we were getting through this committee that directed you for the review, Tina, the bottom line here, and you're standing behind, is that St. Matthews came in third under this RFP, and Community Living came in first. Mr. Acting Chairman, through you, to have that definitively stated?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is correct.
Now, very importantly, at the, because there, I think there was, and this is an internal matter for St. Matthews House, far be it from me to get involved in any internal matters, but the very last paragraph at the bottom of page two, Mr. Acting Chairman, on August 12, given that three-day window after council ratifies, you're still allowed to escalate. St. Matthews House forwards an email to the Manager of Procurement, that would be to you, Tina, that quote, "The decision has been made not to make a further appeal regarding the RFP." So clearly, I think the Executive Director, Mr. Director was at Lakefield, that was here presenting a couple of weeks ago along with members of QB, Marie Cantwell and others. Clearly, between management, board of directors, they made the decision that it's over, we're moving on with life, so to speak. Mr. Acting Chairman, through you, Grace, or Tina, just for again, a definitive statement?
That's correct, sir.
Page three, Mr. Acting Chairman, item three, city liable for severance costs of St. Matthews House employees. I'm very pleased to, well, I hope the employees, obviously internally, are going to be looked at, as I know my next comment would be misconstrued, but from the city tax payer's standpoint, I'm glad that that's in there for the record, Grace. Thank you. Grace, in item four, though, you kind of, and if you can't go any further right now, you kind of opened up a little crack in the door. I wrote down here, you said, amongst the other programs that still get some funding, you know, they're losing 2.1 million out of the 3.2, that's about two-thirds of their funding they're losing because they came in third here. You said, quote, "Maybe mitigate their loss," unquote. Help me understand, Mr. Acting Chairman, through you, by the grace or your boss, General Manager, Trail, because whatever you can say publicly, I would appreciate. I guess just where I'm going further before you answer, I appreciate paragraph three, we're not liable. That was, that'll be dealt with internally, unfortunately, but it'll be dealt with internally with employees. I just don't then want paragraph four, and a crack in the door, to be some form of unofficial compensation for St. Matthews. If there's merit in new programs down the road that they apply for, they absolutely are deserving of, beefing up the remaining ones, I'm on, no problem, but I don't want the perception or object to be the other contractor. Mr. Acting Chairman, I think, Grace, you get the essence of what I'm asking. Or General Manager?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I'll just take the first part of that, just to be quick, like, the 2.1 million that went to St. Matthews House was to flow through. That went from St. Matthews House, so should have no impact in terms of their offering, because that went out through the provision, directly out to the provisional service. The impact to the organization is the administrative funding that they'll lose, $163,000. So just to be clear, that's, that's the, that's, because the 2.1 million was flowed through, went directly to the provisional service. So it wasn't that if that would cause a collapse of the organization, because that money did not fund any pieces of their organization, and Grace can clarify that, the money that funded parts of their organization was only $162,000, which went towards administrative parts of their organization.
But Joanne, then, please help me then clarify further. Did the 2.1 million, wasn't that part of employing 40 people, or am I missing something here then? I appreciate, Joanne, right, so am I missing something, Mr. Acting Chairman?
True, but, but those employees only delivered this program. I'm just talking about the sustainability of St. Matthews.
Okay.
From that perspective. So yes, that money was used to fund staff, but the staff have gone, they don't have to pay those costs anymore. So the impact to St. Matthews House in terms of their sustainability, money that they lose to fund ongoing operations is $162,000.
Okay. Anything further, Grace?
And Grace has talked to them, but you're absolutely right. And if, as Grace can elaborate, maybe an example around the childcare, but it would be for services that we actually need, and not something that's there just to help with the transition of the organization, just purely, or not purely from that perspective.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
So just on that, though, Joanne's correct, that, so they're losing the revenue, they're losing the expenses. So that's the whole point of that, that those expenses will now be incurred by Community Living Hamilton.
Correct.
We, through the, through the course of the discussion, that we've talked with St. Matthews, with the Executive Director and the staff, that we're there to determine, you know, are there some areas that they, we, we know the important work that they provide to the community, and we know the important role they have, and is there some opportunities that, for things that they're currently providing, is there some opportunities for growth in those areas under those, the current contracts?
Okay, so you understand that fine-line distinction, Grace, please, at least as one member of this committee, I don't want the optics or perception to be somewhere down the road, "St. Matthews, relax, we're fully, right, but if they're deserving, our programs enhancing their remaining funding from us, full steam ahead, and I'm fully supportive of that." Lastly, Mr. Acting Chairman, obviously on page four and page five, this is obviously for President of the Union, Marie Cantwell, and of course, her counterpart, Mark QB, Sandra Walker, and others involved from the national QB team, but I guess I, I would hope, my, my hope is that some of these areas of, looks like checkmarks, positive checkmarks that are going to flow, there still be, might still be some angst amongst the 40 St. Matthews employees, it looks like there, looks like there's some greater flexibility of criteria qualifications for applying for similar jobs with Community Living. It seems to be Community Living has taken the staff a plea of seeing how open-minded they can be to accommodate St. Matthews employees, but obviously, that's again, an internal matter between the union and its current management team and board of directors to decide if fairness is, is the order of the day. So, Mr. Acting Chairman, unless some other of my colleagues expose something further, it looks like that this will just be received for information for the official record, and the end of the day, both St. Matthews House did not come in first, and at the end of the day, their management and board of directors team decided not to escalate. Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman.
Thank you very much. Next on my speaker's list is Counselor Whitehead. Please go ahead.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the report and how you dealt with each of those areas. I guess the first question I have, other than obviously the Executive Director, Board Representatives from Matthew House, in the construction of this information report, was there any dialogue, discussion with the union?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we met with the union, Marie Cantwell, along with Sandra Walker, and two of my staff to have the discussion, to see where, where were the areas of their concerns, to see how we could then help pass that information along to Community Living Hamilton to do the best we could to mitigate some of those concerns.
I appreciate it. So they had, or were the draft reports in what you were presenting today?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We indicated that we were answering all the questions that were asked at the last council meeting, or the committee meeting, and would be bringing the report back.
Okay, but they didn't see this report till, at least publicly?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, they did not.
I'm also trying to understand if there was acknowledgement, and this I guess would be to Tina, there's acknowledgement of administrative error or whatever, to define the appeal period, and the notification period. And yet, we had a report come to council. I'm trying to understand the nuance, if we talk about perception and optics, if you're going to the appeal process, and you already got a report, going to committee basically authorizing the decision, the nuance of the optics and the perception of that really doesn't, isn't all that promising about a good, faithful, forward discussion on the appeal? It's just, not suggesting anything we've done wrong, I mean, clear, the perception really doesn't play very well. Help me understand how you, I guess, raise the comfort level, and if there's a lesson earned here on that decision.
Through you, Mr. Chair. By the time the report came to committee, the contract had already been awarded, so really, the report to be presented in committee was scheduled, like I said, before, two days prior to the vendor dispute resolution. So even by that time, the contract had been awarded. There wasn't much I could do, I couldn't stop the contract, since it already happened. It had happened at the same time that St. Matthews House had been advised. So when we found out that there was an error that was made in miscommunication with respect to the award, because what typically happens is that vendors who are not successful are notified, and then we wait five days, and then we award the contract. That happened, but unfortunately, when we sent the advisement out, there's a little tech box that needs to be checked off so that all proponents get advised, and that box was not checked off, and therefore, St. Matthews House was not advised that we probably did. So when we found out that the error had occurred, we decided to immediately have the vendor dispute resolution meeting. Prior to that, St. Matthews House had had a full face-to-face debriefing with procurement representatives, but when we scheduled the vendor dispute resolution, we couldn't get together until unfortunately, two days after the committee. In part of the vendor dispute resolution, the vendor who is putting forth the complaint had to comment on them to provide a written notification of their concerns. St. Matthews House didn't submit a letter, quite likely. I read it, I also read their proposal, and I read the RFP. The number of points between the first and the third performance, there was a 17-point difference. That's quite substantial, and in order for the ranking of St. Matthews House, for there to be an error in the evaluations, to change that much of a point differential, I think I would have seen it in the rank. And so therefore, we have a vendor dispute resolution to give the opportunity to the bidder to raise any other concerns he had, and I felt that there were no further concerns or anything worth looking into further with the evaluation team. They had a very comprehensive evaluation of all three performance, and the, all their concerns were noted and were given to St. Matthews. So that's, through the procurement subcommittee meeting, as you are aware, it was mandated upon the procurement manager to give notification to the proponent that they're to respond to me within three days if they wish to escalate the vendor dispute resolution to the two applicable GMs, and I advised the proponent that at the meeting, and told them that I'd need verification from them within three days if they chose to escalate, if they weren't happy with the meeting with myself. And on the third day, I believe, we got notification that they, they chose not to escalate further. So at that point in time, in my mind, the vendor dispute resolution course is done, and city staff were advised that they could have had with further discussions with Community Living.
So I appreciate the explanation, but I guess my concern, for those of judicial view, are transpired here, and the fact that we had an administrative error that created an elongation for our timeframe, or a secondary opportunity to fix what went wrong by giving Matthews House an opportunity to exercise that five-day appeal. At the same time, we got a report to work with the council approving for Community Living. I thought, I think, that would play well from a process point of view. In fact, you could be arguing, why would you want to escalate something when? In fact, you could be arguing, why would you want to escalate something when the decision was already granted to the committee?
So just maybe Tina, here.
So through Mr. Deputy Chair, when we came forward on August 10th at our committee, we didn't know at that point in time that there was going to be, that there had been an administrative error. So we brought the report forward on the 10th. As far as we were concerned, everything was fine with the process. What we maybe could have done, once we knew that there had been an error, was before the council made, before it was ratified to maybe at that point point out that there had been an issue. So we didn't do that. Nonetheless, if there had been, as Tina said, a significant issue, then we would have brought it back in front of council and say that we're going to have to have a reconsideration because we erred and that this decision would need to be turned over.
So I guess my concern is more about understanding the determination of St. Matthew's not to escalate and could the fact that the committee already made a decision have an implication on that decision? I can't speak to that. I guess the issue, I'm not pursuing this as much on this issue, I just hope that we take high-level review of what transpired here, we can learn from it. Perhaps that report may be suspended or we would be notified that there are issues and concerns that have to be resolved as opposed to accepting that this is the new standard of practice going forward. Hope there's an understanding that being sensitive on perception, that you wouldn't want to render a decision prior to the exhaustive, the appeal process being exhausted. So I think what I'm looking for is that we learn from it and we'll probably sure we're going to make, improve on it. And I said we made a mistake, I don't want to say that, but can we improve on it in the future?
Through you, Mr. Chair. At the time, you're absolutely right, those were some of the information that we've been looking at since that point in time. As soon as we were notified of the dispute, we stopped all negotiations with community living. We put that on hold pending the resolution, so we weren't moving forward. And had we been directed that to not continue that at that point in time, we would have absolutely come back to making a council to inform them of that error and that. But because of the timing and the decision to not pursue it and that procurement upheld the decision, we then just, we resumed our discussions with community living Hamilton at that time. But we are looking at all of those components to ensure that, you know, to look at, it doesn't happen again. If it were to happen again, as to what actions need to be taken.
Appreciate it. Because sometimes you can't plan forever, you have actuality and that's where you learn how you can put along these processes. And perhaps the purpose of the question, I want to make it clear, no more, this doesn't have to be critical, but just more of what have we learned, how can we put along this moving forward? The other one I could focus on was the salary space. So help me understand, all the nonprofits that receive city funding, they provide an annualized base audit or, yeah, I guess it's audited statements to cities, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
So I'm trying to understand if majority of the funding, I know you said this is a past, but majority of the funding is provided in services to the community and by excellent employees of these little organizations and agencies. For example, Good Shepherd, 11 million dollars wasn't available till tomorrow and they have to lay off all those employees. Are they required, and we see that in the audits that there's severance built into their budgets?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It would depend on the collective agreement in this case that St. Matthew's has with their staff as to what the requirement from the application goes. I'm not sure if Eleanor has anything to add as far as the legal aspect of that.
Yes, I think to me, if their primary revenue funding is from grants and so forth from government, what assurance do we have in this process that if they found themselves in a situation where workers are being laid off, that they're solvent and that the dollars are there to pay those out without impacting those employees?
The, whether we're in funding agreement or if it's a service agreement, whenever the city pays monies, we're just expecting to see that the money is spent on the services that we contracted for or that the project is being carried out as pursuant to the funding requirements of the city. And so if there, if there's outstanding money, if the money is not being spent where it should be, then our reports would be, would be a default of the contract and then pursue the default provisions. But that doesn't change the contractual nature of the relationship between the city and the agency because we're not employers, so of those, of the agency or employers of the agency's employees.
Okay, so I understand that, I mean, we've taken positions on, for example, livable wages and actually we're pushing that to a lot of the organizations we contract that out to. So I think as a council, when passing their points going to services, we want to ensure that the employees, the high-level dedicated committed employees will never be left isolated when these circumstances occur, especially when we're providing primary funding to those organizations. I would hope that in these contracts or in these audits we go through, we're ensuring that there's enough solency or was it liability risk, whatever the terminology is, to, that those workers are being somewhat protected. Are we doing that and if we're not, maybe we should. So is there some comment on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. When we look at an agency when they're submitting, in this case for the RFP, we look at the viability of the program. I don't, I don't believe it's as explicit as to address your question. That may be something that we can take back and have a discussion with procurement. In this situation, the notification of this process went out in early 2016 as to information to all the agencies that we were going down this road. Some of, one of the agencies involved shows that they were not going to be pursuing to participate in submitting on the RFP. So at that point in time, gave layoff notes to all of their staff for the end of the year. They did that in January to try and address those situations so that people were aware of the possible outcome.
So I appreciate that because I mean severance, that this is just about payout or it could be a little notice, inappropriate notice there, but I think it's holiday pay and those kinds of things that still have to be paid out. I would just hope that as a city that's funding a lot of these organizations and that we do the audits on their solency and appropriate use of dollars, that we also have the license to ensure that, you know, that there is some provision built in there for eventualities on layoffs and those kinds of things. Because I guess, I don't want to see any worker that provides dedication, commitment, find themselves left with nothing at the same time where the ones who are providing funding oversee the organization. So I want to make sure the workers are somewhat, some protection in this process. And it seems to me that that might be something that we need to maybe focus more on a go-forward basis through this experience. So I just wanted to highlight that, but thank you very much, a very complimentary report.
Thank you, Council Whitehead. Next up, Council Rula.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to repeat what somebody's in the, but I think thoroughly, it has a thorough answer with respect to why we're in this situation ever again. And I think that it's important to recognize that aside from the one error, the outcome of the RFP wouldn't have changed as a result of that error. So if you could just library on that fact, that would be greatly appreciated.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is correct, that we, we felt that the process, it was a very thorough process. We had indicated and worked with our community partners all the way along the line to make sure that everyone was aware that the process was going to be undertaken and what the end goal was to move to one sole provider for the services. We worked with procurement every step of the way. So I was first to admit that we don't do this a lot in our division. So we really relied on procurement's help in every step of the way as we went through this. We had procurement's assistance through the process where we were doing the evaluation of the, all of the submissions and their assistance throughout. We felt that we did the best we could as far with, through that process and made the right decision.
Okay, another very important to ask, but all of this, through you, Mr. Chairman, is the service itself. And we've heard some people mention that perhaps we're cutting the service or the public way to impact. Can you elaborate on, separate the second from the fact? What, where do you stand as it pertains to helping to be served with this contract?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We feel that through this process, we'll be able to in fact have more service for family and children. We have currently a waitlist for these services and so we're hoping that we're going to be able to enhance the number of children that are being able to be served.
Another component to all of this, Mr. Chairman, is the, is the fact that, understanding the sensitivity with respect to the agency in which we're being in them. Normally, if this were a private sector construction company, for example, you would not be sitting here right now having this discussion. So in my old time on council, I don't ever recall someone losing a bid and then it coming to this size. So I think it's important to recognize the importance of preserving the integrity of that process but also recognizing the sensitivity surrounding the job losses and somehow trying to assist in that transition. And I'm wondering, and I'm sure that we have attempted to communicate any mitigating facts that or services that we have in order to mitigate that transition. Can you elaborate on anything along those lines?
Through you, Mr. Chair. During the RFP process, we wrote right into it as strong a language as we could that to allow for all of the current staff that deliver this program to have the opportunity for new employment with new employer, whoever that may have ended up being. So through our legal information that we put it in right into the RFP, we are working with the agency that did community living Hamilton to ensure that as many of the current staff are provided the opportunities. They have been very open to that and we feel that staff have been given all the opportunities available to them.
Excellent, and I think that would be beneficial to them and I'm sure they recognize the benefits of actually seeking out interview those particular individuals. So last, I just want to thank you for your time, thorough process and what you followed, support that we have here today. And if we could perhaps have another update on how that transition has gone at the end of it all, it would be greatly appreciated to just determine that those that have lost their job, that hopefully all of them regain a job, but how that process, or what the outcome of that process actually was. And that would be greatly appreciated.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We absolutely can do that. And also provides any verbal updates along the way as through the process of the hiring. As I said, we're to end a transition phase, the contract doesn't exactly, it doesn't actually kick in until January 1st. But through this transition time, we can provide updates.
And many thanks for all the data. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No further speakers unless I see indications. Therefore, it is time for a motion to receive the report of Council Whitehead and seconded by Council Jackson. Thank you very much to all of my colleagues, all in favor.
Carrie.
Carrie, to report with you. I will turn the chair back over to you, Council.
Thank you very much. We are now on to item of the motions. Item 9.1, Gateway Arena Purchase. Council Jackson, may you please present a motion for the Gateway Arena.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Move by myself, seconded by Board for Council, Sam Rula. Has been there for everybody to see over the last couple of weeks. I've spoken to several members of committee and again, I'll just quickly read it out for the record. Where's Salt Lake Arena's 333 through the Old City? Both of these arenas are significantly, significantly beyond their use of life. Where's significant cost movement required to bring them up to current standard? Where's single patio arena's not cost effective? Whereas the indoor recreation facility review report, which we just recently had from staff, investigates, directs us to investigate current private arenas, explore any opportunities to replace current aging infrastructure. Whereas the owner of the 333 Gateway Arena has expressed interest in selling the current street path, if it ever was to be expanded before patio, is expensed to the city. Whereas the current private public partnership of New Stadium Mohawk Sports Park and the Mohawk Forest Arena has been very successful over 13 years. Whereas the area counselors are supportive of the recommendation, both 333 Girl Hockey, 333 Planet Hockey, supported the new quad pad arena, 333 replaced with two aging. Whereas in keeping with the Mohawk Forest model, financing operation of the new quad pad, no negative impact on operating our capital to the city and taxpayers. Therefore, be resolved, city manager be directed, obviously in conjunction with the general manager, community services, Preo, and our recreational director, Jack Brown. Support the feasibility of the purchase of Gateway with the addition of the fourth pad at no cost to us using the same models Mohawk and/or an in-house model or hybrid report back to committee sometime in January or early next year. And again, Mr. Chairman.
Can you just give a second?
Council Rula.
Seconded by Council Rula, motion to have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I think I've spoken to most members of the committee. Again, this was unsolicited, it was brought to my attention of the possibility of the gateway owner wanting to sell. Spoken, I directly spoke to both board, nine to 10 councilors, Conley, Pearson. They're very much aware of Salt Lake, 333 are in dire straits. And this is an opportunity and based on staff's recent presentation to explore the indoor facility study that shows about the opportunities to either repurpose or maybe acquire new, shutter, whatever the case might be, lots of consultation unfold that I thought, and in light of the tremendous success, and obviously there's no guarantees here whatsoever in terms of operations of future, we know it's by private sector, but I will speak to the tremendous success of what's happened at Mohawk Forest Center with New Stadium, EPL, Ben's School, the entire management team, providing extra ice, providing not only have they been making money pretty well for almost 13 years they've made existence, last 10 or 11, we have made money as well at the city and most importantly, provide additional ice. All of that coming together with the concurrence of the two board counselors, I just thought it was deranged belief in this conversation.
Thank you very much for your leadership. We have on the speakers list, Council Fart, called by Council Whitehead. You know, we saw Council Whitehead, those are yours.
I certainly support the feasibility and looking at, I mean, the four pack is a money generator because it was really primarily focused at the adult, the community where, you know, a lot of the revenue is generated. I think 333, Ken was saying that this is really about the kids and ensuring that they have an adequate, safe, quality ice service arena to play of. And of course, when you look at that funding model from a revenue stream perspective, that's a little different than the current quad pad. So they're not exactly the same regardless of the modeling in the business case. Having said that, we also know that we've got aging arenas that it's like putting good money after bad in that current location. So it makes sense to do the feasibility and understand the business case and provide a higher quality service to these, a lot of these young children. I also was concerned because in the same report, we identified arenas that are shade to, we could state phased out, to be closed, and yet I can think one in more recent years that we put over two, close to $2 million in fixing dressing rooms and so forth, even though our own reports indicate that we should be phased out. I would be concerned that if we go this way with the business case, I would hope that, you know, we don't hang on to rings that become money pits in the future. But I think that would be determined through the feasibility study. So I certainly fully support what's going forward. I love these kinds of partnerships where it makes sense. And we know that 333 is a growing community and needs adequate amenities to provide a higher quality life for middle, so thank you.
Thank you. We have the second time speakers, let's Council Jackson, Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you to Council Whitehead for his supportive remarks in the conversation. Just for the record, Mohawk Forest Center also does have a recreational component for kids play as well and they still make money. So I just thought in case some members of committee may have not been aware of that, but I really appreciate the favorable comments. Thank you.
You've heard the motion asked presented and moved by Deputy Mayor Tom Jackson, seconded by Council Rula. All those in favor?
Carrie.
Carrie. I like to hear it. We're now on to general information and other business. Item 11.1 is an amendment to the outstanding business list. May I please have a motion to remove item DD, respective concerns with childcare? Do I, do I have to reduce myself to that one as well? Just in case, I'm going to pass the chair over to Council Johnson, certainly allowing him to take those procedural issues.
Thank you very much. Yes, if I'm not mistaken, it's a relatively simple matter. We require a motion for remove DD.
Move it.
Moved by Council Fart, seconded by Council Whitehead. Is there any discussion? I see none. All in favor? That was. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Just in time for the motion to adjourn, moved by.
Is it topical, please, Jim?
Yeah, well, actually, I talked to Joanne before she came in and I just reaffirm because it's been topical with the growing trend of the rescues and our waterfall.
it's been topical, the growing trend of the rescues and our waterfalls, that we've already I think two departments initiated, but there is a, a report coming back in that regard. So I wanted to, since it's topical, let me just picking it up today, I want to make it clear that a report is already scheduled to come back and lead to this committee.
Very much appreciated, Councilwoman Whitehead. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Scally, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tom Jackson. All those in favor? Carry there. Thank you very much.